26th, this is the GBS special meeting to welcome new GBS members and do board assignments. I'll just read the boilerplate. The Gurwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310, and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Gurwood Board of Supervisors operates under Gurwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. So I'll call this order at 3:02, and we'll do roll calls and any disclosures. So my name is Mike Edgerton, and I'm co-chair and land use supervisor. Let's do Brianna next.
Brianna Sullivan, Park Center Creation and Cemetery Supervisor. No disclosures.
Now we can do the inaugurals. Who would like to start, Jen?
Jennifer Wingard, new board member.
Welcome. And Abanda?
Amanda Sassy, new member.
Welcome. Okay, and I don't think there are any disclosures. So move on to agenda revisions or approval. So have the agenda in front of me. Are there any changes to that? If not, I'll have a entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll move to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, a second?
I can second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, and we'll do this by voice vote. So just all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Next set of announcements. GBS is in, sorry, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please keep your phone muted until called on to talk. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public, and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. And please be respectful of everyone's opinions. So agenda item number one, first we'll do a welcome to new GBS members. So welcome Jennifer and welcome Amanda. And it's it's great that we had so much interest, I think, in the last set of elections. And congratulations to you both for winning the elections and welcome to this august body. So we have a review of current and ongoing GBS topics, and there's a very, very big list. Who would I gonna ask Kyle or Margaret to start introducing those, and then I'll throw some in as well?
Sure. And I gave sort of what I feel is maybe the top two or three, but Mike feel free to throw as we go in. And I'm kind of going by what the supervisor roles are. And so, you know, the first one I'll start with is fire. I would probably say the largest aspect of fire right now is the EMS funding and the contract negotiations. Pretty much the contract is is ready to go. Tomorrow night is a big night for the assembly to approve the requested funds of $300,000 increase for EMS funding to the fire department. That would come from the area-wide budget. And so there was a very productive meeting on Friday, a work session with the assembly. Well, Chief Weston and I attended, and and John and Suzanne, our assembly reps, really carried the they carried amendment to have that funding brought back up to the $300,000 amount that was agreed upon between negotiations. Whereas right now, the budget, the OMB Department of Operation Management Budget only has it in there for $175,000 for half the year. But that doesn't take into the fact that the department has been running on a deficit for EMS funding for this first half of the year already. So so anyways, the assembly seemed they didn't question it. They didn't really they they they're really trying to figure out where the money was going to come from. And currently, right now, it is being slated to cut two executive positions from the mayor's staff. But it was noted that normally the mayor and assembly don't reduce each other's budgets. So there is potentially some CARES Act money, which can help get this going and 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 get it figured out. Oh, no, excuse me, not CARE Act money. The new taxation for public safety through the alcohol tax can help fund this. So so they're working on that. So that's I think that's the biggest one. Whoever's in the supervisor role for fire needs to be really active with the fire department and the fire board. And so attending their meetings, being aware of the business that's helping there and things like that. So so that's with fire. Do any of the anybody want to add anything to fire department?
I just make one comment, and then I'll invite Chief Weston. So the the thing I find still little confused, well, not confusing, but awkward, is that there is a there's a contract between the municipality and a distinct nonprofit, Gurwood Fire Rescue, Gurwood Volunteer Fire Rescue, for these services. And we kind of sit in between those. So if we're not representing the Gurwood Fire Department, we're representing the people who receive the service and pay for the service. And it does make it slightly awkward sometimes about what we're actually advocating for, because we're also community members, and we're very proud of the fire department. But it's it's a it's a tricky role sometimes. Chief Weston?
I just wanted to mention a few things. Yeah, so the $300,000 that they're voting, hopefully that will be restored. That is less than what was asked for by AFD. The number was 600,000. It was reduced to 300. But 300 was the number that went forward. Secondly, once we're the contract is going to be in final draft form on the 30th of April, and then it will be approved and will be in effect on June 1st, pending what happens tomorrow night. So that takes away the EMS funding and that kind of weird position that GBOS has been in. And then, as you know, for the last couple of years, we've been trying to work on having appropriate minimum staffing for fire and EMS. And so, once we figure out the EMS staffing, then we can look at fire staffing and make sure that that's staffed appropriately. Just as a preview to what's coming up in the future, the issues, the board is getting a presentation on minimum staffing, improving the wages for the volunteers, and then also long-term capital needs, which would be three SUV replacements. We've also got to find in the fire budget around 50 to 60,000 for NFPA for fire medicals that we should have been doing all this time. And so that's kind of the things that are coming forward. But other than that, we're looking pretty good on a lot of things that we fixed in the last three years. So I feel like we're almost at a good spot. Thank you.
And should add on the capital side, we have we did get the bond passed for the new rescue, and we're working on funding from within the service area for the for the engine as well. Okay, anybody else wants to name? If nobody else wants to make any comments, go ahead, Kyle.
I'll go to parks. And so with parks or seasonal parks, probably the two largest issues right now, we'll talk about one of them today at the quarterly meeting, is the hand tram. And then the other one is the trails plan. With the hand tram, we have, and for those who aren't up to speed on this quickly, but, you know, we have closed the hand trams since our incidents that happened in 19. You know, we had two incidents, one fatality and one major injury. And it has been closed since then. And we've been in the pursuit of looking at improvements for it. Also, almost equally, looking at a management plan for it, which part of that management plan will be finding a contractor who can provide us inspections and maintenance of this mechanized tram system. And that has been a huge challenge, trying to find that. And so at this point in time, the hand tram is remaining closed. And we are also pursuing a study right now for a bridge across Winter Creek as 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 an option to gap that connection between between the over the creek there. So so we're going through that. The Gurwood Trails Plan, we are pretty far into this now. We are working with a contractor, and she's been helping us get through it. It is getting into we're in draft stage of the plan now. It's within the hands of the committee for review and comment on that draft. And then we'll be going out to public for review of that draft, and 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 then going forward from there. So so those have been two big things going into it. We're moving into really park season now. You know, as the snow melts and summer comes, the parks are getting increasingly busier. We are bringing on staff. We have hired two staff, and we are currently interviewing for the third position. We have the fourth position on hold at this point in time, as we're just trying to fulfill one position at a time. It's actually been quite a struggle to find qualified people. And so but we're almost there. So we are pushing away at that and getting ready for for park operations and and moving forward. So so those are the things going on with parks at this point in time.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Brianna? Okay, any questions? Sorry. What do you like to cover next, Kyle?
Sure, roads. So we're in the final, we're in the last four days of our contract with Cooleyco, who's been our contractor now for almost seven, eight years. They did not rebid, and the new bid was won by Western Construction. Western Construction is a pretty well-known roads maintenance contractor. They have a good portion of the ones in Anchorage for the other service areas. You know, Anchorage is made up of many service areas, and many of them are with contracted road service. And so they have been doing that for a long time. And so we will they officially start Saturday, so we'll start to see them around town next week, working on different items with spring cleanup, and then switching over to calcium chloride and and dust control. Once the roads melt out enough, we still got roads that are frost heaving and releasing a lot of water right now. So we're waiting for that stuff to dry out as our spring rolls on. But we did take delivery of 30 bags of calcium today, so we are ready for whenever conditions allow. And the contractor is ready to go. So that that's a that's a big one there. And then we have upcoming summer projects. We are definitely going to be paving Alberg under the under the contract or under the bid that was just put out. Once again, Western Construction won that. So I think that could be actually to the advantage of the service area. They will mobilize a crew down here to do grinding and paving. And we're gonna get bids from them on looking at several other areas that need asphalt maintenance. So that our our primary focus this summer may be asphalt, just because we have the ability to use the the already bidded work to do more. And so we will be focusing on that as we move forward. So so yeah, so that's currently where we're at with roads and 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 moving forward there. Yeah, any questions with roads?
I think the other the other things are, we have some questions about speed limits as well. There's a the question about speed limit on Crow Creek and the what the stop signs that we passed at the last meeting.
Correct. So on the speed limit Crow Creek, I'll have to follow up with the state on that. That's the state road. And they, I think, last time we talked to Scott Thomas, who is the basically the chief designer and engineer for South Central, he was gonna do a study on it. So I will follow up to make sure that's still on his radar, to see about reducing the speeds on Crow Creek Road, as was request of the neighborhood there. And then the other is the stop signs. I have submitted the resolution that GBOS passed, I submitted last Tuesday, to the traffic department. I have not heard anything back, so I'll follow up with them to see where that lands and about making that happen.
And the last word I'm gonna say is just swoops.
Oh, yeah, swoops. So if you're aware of this, that, you know, the DOT redid the Aliesca bike path, which was a much-needed improvement, and is a nice bike path until you hit those swoops where the bike path comes up next to Aliesca. And this summer, we threw agreement with DOT that they're gonna reimburse us for. We plan to re-stripe those and inlay those stripes so they don't wear off each time we plow each winter, and try to really direct traffic so they're not going all the way up to the to the white line of Aliesca Highway and trying to focus in there. You know, after they finished the Aliesca Highway, it led to a design change in how they do these swoops, and where they're not using part of the shoulder of the road as part of the bike path, you know, in the sense of a and making sure there's complete separation and enough width for for both the bike path and the shoulder. And so that has changed. But the DOT did get some concessions and has given us funding. We did a bunch of stencil work last year, which looks like we'll have to do again, just because it gets worn off with the gravel and plowing in the winter. But we'll be also putting bollards up so people aren't driving on the bike path off the swoops, as we look like we have somewhat normal tourism season returning this year, especially with independent drivers driving rental cars and RVs. So yep, that's where we're at with that.
Well, Kyle, any questions on roads?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. Is there any particular reason, or do we do we know or care why Cooley didn't respond to the RFP?
It was more of a internal business decision. They just we requested newer equipment like we do every five years, and they just didn't have the financial means to purchase that newer equipment.
Okay, which topic area would you like to cover next, Kyle?
Let's go into land use. And so this is a role of a supervisor. And if anything, this may be one of the more busier positions, as Mike could probably testify. You know, right now, there's the area plan going on. And so, you know, the supervisor may be involved with that. You know, it's probably it's wise that they probably involve with it. The area plan is an independent group, so they're not a subcommittee of GBS. They're not a government entity. They're their own entity, and they're working forward on it. So so they work independently of of our normal systems here. Code changes, those are ongoing thing. You know, right now, we're looking at parking code change, and then ADUs. And, you know, people have, there's the community, some definitely some community members have a longer list of code changes that they like to see associated with title or chapter nine, title 21, which is the which is the, excuse me, title 20, what is it? Chapter nine is our chapter for our code here for title.
Title 21, chapter nine.
And so so there's there's quite a bit of work with that. And then there's just always reoccurring land use issues or land use requests, you know, which come through Land Use Committee. So anybody who's usually on the well, if anybody's on the land is a land use supervisor, they need to attend the land use meeting each month. So it is at least one additional meeting that you're attending, if not more, in that aspect. Mike, do you have anything to add there?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we've we've seen over the last year is, well, quite a lot confusion about what our local process is and how that ties into the municipal process, and also how much the municipal process takes any notice of what we do and say down here. So we had a fairly big example of that when it came to the Gunny Sec development. So kind of basically making it easier for people to navigate our system is definitely one of the initiatives we're trying to follow, and also making sure that we have a good connection with with the planning process in the municipality so they understand what we do, and trying to fill in these sort of little gaps and tie a few loose ends together.
Correct.
Any other questions on land use? So two left, Kyle.
Public safety. So public safety is is working primarily with the police contract and the police services that we're contracting through our partnership with Whittier, the city of Whittier. And and so one of the bigger things there is the current contract, and looking at the future as to where we're going. And that's something that we're really gonna be pushing with the Public Safety Advisory Committee over the next, excuse me, here, over the next month, is, excuse me, over the next year, is working on looking at what we're gonna do, because we're already into, I think, year two now, year two of the of the contract. And before long, we're gonna be in year three, and then we have to make a decision. And so currently, the way the contract's written right now is that we have two one-year extensions with Whittier. But part of those extensions is that Whittier can reexamine their expenses, and then we can look at if we want to agree to that. And so, you know, it is a chance to us for to reevaluate our options as a community and and dust off the things. We just went through this on this last new contract. We went through a process of examining what would it take for Gurwood to have its own police department, what would it look like if we were to join APD, and what would it look like if we went back to Whittier. And so, in the end, we chose to go back with Whittier. And and so we will be looking at that again. You know, and it's a dance, it's a relationship that we have with the city of Whittier and their council as to how we handle the different, you know, how we handle this relationship. And, you know, the council has their opinions, too. And they may not all the council members, and they may not be the same, but they have their opinions about how they feel about the relationship and and sharing the services. So so I think if anybody who takes the public safety, it'd be good for them to sort of develop a relationship with the council, at least attend a meeting quarterly and interact with them, also get to know the mayor and the and the chair of the council. And 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 so that you just have that relationship and you're aware of it. And we, you know, we depend on Chief Ashay to keep us informed, too, as to, you know, the way things are going in that aspect. So so that I think that's a new one. The other other thing, the topic that we're always dealing with is staffing, is making sure that Whittier is keeping up to staffing levels so that appropriate coverage is happening through their police services. And it's a big struggle for Whittier. You know, like any other small department, they're struggling to get officers, and they're being out recruited by the larger, you know, police officer departments, you know, Anchorage, Troopers, Fairbanks, Juno, you know, and so they're they're always struggling. I know they did, they just brought on another officer, and he was he's in training today and 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 going through that. So but they're they're always trying to find officers. So so that's something we always keep aware of. So that's that's what I have for policing.
Any questions from the board? Okay, let's go to cemetery.
Cemetery. This is pretty quiet. You know, this is one of the powers of GBS to advise the budgets on and 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 help us lead. And it's pretty quiet right now. Cemetery is really, it has a small committee. It's mostly led by Tommy O'Malley. He does a he does a primary majority of the work. And he is currently working with Eagle River on their development of cemetery out there for the Eagle River Chugiak area, because they are want the same sort of setup out there as we want here in Gurwood with a parcel where there's a local cemetery, as as a former city manager referred to it, Neighborhood Cemetery. And and so they are getting further in the process as it goes. Last we heard, they have come down to some alternative sites, and I think they have one site that they're really pushing towards. And so what the long-term goal is, is that they, like us right now, would have a package together that they could put forward to a bond proposal. Cemeteries are funded by area-wide funds and maintained that way. So there's only the city only has one cemetery, which is the downtown cemetery. So were to move forward, the cemetery would fall into that department and be maintained by the cemetery department for perpetuity reasons. And so, and if the Eagle River and Gurwood can team up, that might make the bond more successful, just than Gurwood trying to go out the bond on this. And also, at the same time, they would team up with downtown to help make improvements there. So if they can make all three come together, it might make the proposition a lot better. So we are waiting to see what happens with Eagle River, and we'll push forward from there.
The best part about cemetery is it's it's just full of so many good pun opportunities. So when you said it's quiet, it's kind of deathly quiet, isn't it, the cemetery at the moment? And the other thing we never talk about, because I think it's a mistake in the code, is according to code, we also have the power to 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 fund solid waste services, although I don't think we do. So that's probably just something we have to clean up at some point.
They work as a utility. So they're independent business, and they're fee-based, so they don't take taxes.
Okay, I think we kind of combined both the review of current topics and also review roles, I think. I think you mentioned most of the committees. PSAC with the fire department, it's really the external relationship with the board of Gurwood Volunteer Fire and Rescue. LUC is obviously LUC. Parks include recreation trails. So we don't really, I mean, how what typically happens, Kyle, with the supervisors occasionally turn up to sort of Friends of Skate Park and things like that, but they're not actually formally subcommittees?
No, they're more organizations that we created as staff to give us advisement on what they would like to be seen done. So like our friends of the tennis courts and our friends of the skate park. And and currently, we don't have an active group of the Friends of the Playground, which used to be out there. We call them for meetings and get their advisement on like we have a meeting coming up next week with the Friends of the Skate Park to really hammer down what we're gonna do on improvements. And, you know, with other other meetings, it's fundraising events and things like that. So so yeah, those those groups, but we always invite the supervisor to attend if they would like. But at times, it's more of a direction for us as to how to work with things.
Thank you. So I think if there are other any questions about what the different roles are, we can we can start moving into item two, actually, with assignment of roles. So if there are no questions, let's see if anyone's, does anyone have any very strong preferences for what they do? Amanda?
Hi, yeah, I guess I do have one question really quick. The roads supervisor, would that be mostly working with Kyle and Margaret? There's no like committee, right?
No, you'd be working directly with me. And if anything, you may be taking phone calls that you're getting from community members and getting them over to me to, you know, if anything, dealing with something, an issue out there. And then the other aspect about it is just reviewing and keeping in touch with me about the contractor's performance and expenses. So each time I get an invoice, a monthly invoice, I send it to the supervisor with the explanation of the work that we performed. And then I always verify that the invoice that they're charging us meets our account. I get daily tickets every time they work. They fill out ticket each, you know, about their hours and the work they performed. And then I sign those tickets to make sure. And then I I cross the cross-reference those with the invoices that come in. So usually, I send that off to supervisor. The supervisor gives us the okay to pay, and we go forward from there. So that's typical road supervisor.
Awesome. Thank you. That would be my preferences to be the road supervisor.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll just we'll just get preferences from everybody. And then if there's any conflict, we'll the policy we've followed in the past of doing it is doing it by seniority. And at last, I'm the head of the seniority list. So so any any thoughts, Brianna or Jen?
Go ahead, Jen.
Oh, so I guess I don't understand if you're the priority on why don't you just say what your preferences first, and I'll work around that?
Because I want to know what everybody wants to do. We'll do it by if we can, we'll do it by consensus without without pulling rank at all.
Oh, okay. Well, I am a little bit interested in public safety.
Okay. Do you have a preference, Brianna? You enjoying your current role?
I am. I feel like I'm only partway through it, so I'd like to continue it, as I still feel like I'm new. But it's already been a year, and here we are on teams, looking at each other, assigning roles.
Yep. Okay. So that leaves, obviously, there's only four supervisors at the moment, and we have five, traditionally, five areas, the other one being fire department. Somewhat we'll, and I don't think anyone said that's their first choice. So we will assign that. So what we'll, and I don't think anyone said that's their first choice, so we will assign that at the end of this process. And then we may rearrange slightly when, when we appoint someone to seat C. So it sounds like, unless there's any further discussion, it's, I mean, I'm happy to continue land use, but I'm not going to do it beyond this year. This is going to be my last year. I've just got a number of initiatives I'd like to finish off and then throw, throw it to somebody else. So I'm happy to continue land use, it sounds like Brianna's happy to continue recreation and parks and with a little bit of cemetery in there. Amanda Rhodes and Jen, do you prefer Jen or Jennifer, Jen? Jennifer, what do you prefer?
Either Jennifer, but Jen is fine too, just not Jen.
I will never say that word. I'll say Jennifer. And Jennifer Public Safety. So is everyone happy with that?
Yes, happy.
Okay, so, because this, do we actually vote on this? I can't remember, I don't think we do, okay. So because this is a, this is special meeting, so we can vote. Let's, it's actually, it's the best way of doing this. Can we do it together as a slate or can we do it, should we have to, do we have to do it individually? I think we can do it as a slate.
Yeah, so maybe make a motion and then approve it. The one thing you should clarify is who's going to take a temporary role with fire.
That's my next topic. Let's, let's assign the four we have now and then when we finish that, we'll have, we'll have the discussion about the, about the fire department. So I would entertain a motion to assign the seats as described, or assign the responsibilities as described.
So moved.
Okay, can we hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So Kyle, can you do a roll call?
Sure, Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, so fire department role. If nobody else does it, I will take that role on, although I prefer not to. Because I'm going to be pretty busy, but I would, I would definitely be happy if anybody else was prepared to do that temporarily. If there are no conflicts.
Temporarily would probably be till, when is that meeting, May 10th to?
May 10th, so it would be through May, probably through the end of May realistically.
Just with the appointment process through the mayor, so.
Yeah, maybe into June.
I could try to do it, I just don't know at this point how many meetings extra there are, if I can make them all.
Probably at this point, hopefully tomorrow night's successful, at this point it'll probably just be when their regular board meetings are that you attend that. And, and then check in with the chief in advance of any GBOS meetings.
Chief Weston.
So there'll be meetings this week because we'll have to get the draft contract, right? So there's going to be a meeting this week after Tuesday and then the next board meeting, which will probably be next Tuesday night at seven o'clock. And then the meetings are quarterly from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we should do this formally, so I would entertain a motion that Brianna takes on the, temporarily takes on the fire department responsibility until CC is appointed.
So moved.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I'll second.
Thanks, Amanda. So again, Kyle, let's do the roll call.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, and we just have one last thing to assign, which is the chair or co-chair positions. I am happy to continue in my position. Would anyone else like to co-chair?
I have a question about that, is a co-chair needed, like, do you want one or are you happy to just do it?
I think we wrote our rules so we could have co-chairs, we've had co-chairs for a long while. It's a weird situation at the moment because there's only one person on the board who's been doing it for over a year. So we, we could have one chair or we can have co-chairs. I really, it's if anybody wants to take on the co-chair role, I'd be happy to share it, but I'm okay not sharing it. I'm not sure I want that much power, but. I don't want the role that responsibility is really the truth.
Well, in the past, Mike, when you have a, a conflict of interest or really not, but like Gerwood Bearware, you say, let's hand over the chair. Can you still pass it to someone else who's not technically co-chair for a portion of the meeting that you don't want to vote on or?
What I would suggest is that you think about a vice chair. If there isn't a co-chair, then there's a vice chair, so we know who, who can, goes directly to. And then, and then, yeah.
Or if they're absent, okay.
Okay, so let's put it this way then, if anyone wants to co-chair, there's an opportunity there. If, if not, someone has to do vice chair position. So I'm looking at you, Brianna.
Oh, well, I was going to ask Jennifer, she was interested, I'm not opposed.
I'm not opposed, but I'm so new, I kind of thought you were the natural, sorry, Brianna.
Okay, well, that makes sense. And I had great leaders through Jerry and Mike. So I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and we, as staff, we try to help you too to keep things straight, so they'll feel like you're out there by yourself.
Thank you.
Everything would collapse without Kyle and Margaret being at the meeting and helping us.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, was that when you proposed the motion, is that the vice chair position or co-chair position, Brianna?
Co-chair.
Okay, good.
Keep it the same.
That makes sense. So do you want to propose that as a motion?
I can, I propose myself as the co-chair for GBOS.
Can we hear a second?
Yep.
Thank you, Amanda. So Kyle, roll call please.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Excellent, okay. So we've got through items one and two, thank you everybody for stepping up. Item three, review and approve $1,985 for engineering of new banner display at Lions Club Park, Kyle.
So, explain the backstory on this. I was approached by Rotary to see about a project that they could do here. And, and they were, and, and they were really actually focused more on just doing the banner replacement. They recognized that we've lost trees over the years, we have, they used to have multiple trees up there that they hung the banners from and we're down to one tree now. And, and they were looking at a more long-term, sustainable system to display banners at this corner. They have so far expressed interest in funding the construction of the project. But due to the fact that it's on Muni land, because it would be within the boundaries of the park, DOT is not supportive of having this within their boundaries of the right-of-way. We would need to have this designed, structurally designed, so that it is built and is not going to be a hazard built on the parkland. And so in order to do that, I need a structural engineer and through our term contract with the Batte Company, they were able to do that design work, which here the cost would be $1,985. So 2,000 bucks to do this design work, so that there's design and then that way we can file for a permit and, and do it. This is what I considered a private-public partnership in the sense that it, our, I've, my talks with Rotary and, and potentially Lions Club is that we would front the design work and then we would expect the Rotary and Lions Club to come up with the funds for the materials and the actual construction of this banner display system. And so I've done the legwork here to get this done and, and I told them I would run it through GBOS for approval as it would come out of our capital account to fund this. And the time I touch the capital account, I always make sure to get the approval of the board. And, and then put it to Rotary to drum up the support and funds to make this work. One thing I was very clear with Rotary about was the fact that I do want Lions Club to support this because this will be within the Lions Club Park, it's a park that they help maintain and fundraise for. And so, and, and so I want to make sure that they're on board with this. And so I think, I haven't heard that fully yet, but I think they wanted a good idea as to what we are getting into and what this might look like. And this would be an aspect of it. So that said, if I don't find the support and, and commitment from the groups to fund the construction aspect, then I won't move forward on this design work until I, until I know that happens or if it doesn't, we just put this to bed. So that's where we're at.
So is that this is a freestanding structure?
This would be a freestanding structure and, I'm sorry, I don't have the display here. But it would be like two, basically two flagpoles. And between these flagpoles, you know, then they can raise the banner up and down and it would work that way. And so, so yeah, it would, it would be a freestanding structure.
At about 20 feet high or so?
Correct. Yep, about 20, 22, 23, yep, 20 feet high, so.
Brianna?
I was just going to ask Kyle, since he has had a lot of experience putting the signs up and down for years in all kinds of weather. Kyle, if you don't really like the design, will you have the power to tell them you'd like some part of it tweaked or changed? Or does it have to go to us again? We're just kind of saying yes and then to the design team?
Yeah, no, I would work with the design team to make sure we get something that's functional for us and, and, and works right. So, so yeah, no, I would, I would, I would stop that. I probably wouldn't bring it back to GBOS unless I had some sort of contractual issue in that aspect. I would just work through like we do with our design teams to get, get things done. Now, what we may do is if it looks like it's going to be something that's very, you know, the, the design they come up with has to be this larger structure and it looks like it's going to have a view shed issue with the park, then I probably would bring it back just for approval to have the community at least see it and, and through GBOS get a sense to comment on it, if we go that way. But I don't foresee that happening. I, I see more just basically like two flagpoles going up in that location and then banners can go up and down. One thing that will be on those flagpoles, we know at the very least will probably be a little sign that says, you know, banner needs to be removed at, if winds look to be over 60 miles per hour, you know, sustained winds, then they should come down. Which should happen anyways now, those banners get torn to shreds when we get those big wind events and, and that, that, that would probably better manage.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Amanda?
I'm pretty sure that you already said this, but I just wanted to double check that if Rotary doesn't, isn't able to get the funds, we're not going to go forward with the design, so this money wouldn't be spent?
No, no, if we don't, if we don't get full support from them that they're, they're committed to move forward on this project, then, then we won't move forward with giving a notice to proceed to the contractor to design it.
Great, thank you.
There's a bit of a chicken and egg situation here, until it's been designed, we won't really have a good sense of construction cost, will we?
There's a bit of that, yes. So, you know, it, it, it's sort of the, the risk of, of, of doing that. And I explained that to them, you know, working on government land, this is, this is what happens. Where if you're on private land, you may have, you have less oversight and regulation associated with it.
Okay, any other questions? Not seeing any, I would entertain a motion to vote on this, to approve the spending of $1,985.
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any more discussion? Let's move on to roll call though, Kyle.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public comment, or limited members of the public at the meeting. Public comment person is offering, public comment must state the full name and address, public comment is limited to three minutes per person. A must be on subjects not listed on the agenda, would anyone like to make a public comment? Obviously we can do as, as board members if we wish to do something in our public capacity, in our, sorry, in our private capacity. Okay, I'm not seeing anything, so in that case we will move to adjournment. I'd be happy to hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you, I'll just assume that's by assent. Thanks, everyone, see you again in about 13 minutes.
13 minutes, yep, see you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.